Welcome to this public forum with the candidates for Burleigh County Commission. I am Vanessa Pfeifer Johnson with the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is co-sponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are six candidates running for election on three open seats for the Burleigh County Commission tonight, and all candidates have joined, oh, excuse me, five of the six candidates have joined us here tonight. There are Leroy Baird, Brad Feldman, Kathleen Jones, Jim Paluso, who cannot be with us tonight, he has a prior commitment, Jerry Saudi, and Doug Shonert. The audience is invited to submit questions using the index cards provided to you in the audience, and viewers at home can phone in questions by calling 355-1312 between now and 6:45 tonight, tonight only, October 2nd. The number again is on your screen, 355-1312. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of Burleigh County. Now, let's meet our candidates. You each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Burleigh County Commission, and we'll begin with you, Mr. Saudi.
Thank you. I served on the, last year served on the Burleigh County Home Rule Charter and that kind of went my after days.
Microphone. You may, you may begin again.
Sorry. A year ago, I served, offered to volunteer to serve on the Burleigh County Home Rule Charter Commission because I believed in that process of funding rather than the property tax mill levy, and so that was successful. I think the voters believed that that also was a good option, and so I would like to continue to work on that. We live out in Burnt Creek Township, it's an unorganized township. We have a special assessment for a paved road that lies a mile away from our house, and so I experience all the same things that all the voters do, and I can appreciate what's going on. The legislature gave the counties a substantial break in our taxes, and I want to continue to see that preserved and possibly even strengthened by actions that the county commission can take. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Baird, one minute to tell us why you want to run for this position.
Thank you. I'd first like to say thank you to you, Vanessa Pfeifer Johnson, we've just met this evening. I'd also like to extend a thank you to the...
I'd like to extend a thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, and Dakota Media Access for pulling together this forum. I am here mainly running for this position in a sense of giving back. I don't mean that necessarily in an altruistic sense, I mean it as a true commitment. My family and I lived in Wilton for the seventies and the sixty, excuse me, seventies and eighties. We lived in Bismarck for a number of years when I started my law practice in Bismarck in the early eighties, and we've lived out in Burleigh County now for about twenty-some years. I guess maybe luckily I'm reaching the point where I've started to slow down a bit in my law practice, which gives me some more time to serve others, and that's what I want to do. I want to give of my time, give of my talents, give of my education, and give of my experience to Burleigh County.
Thank you. Mr. Shonert.
I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. I think that's a great thing to get the public, give them the knowledge of the candidates who are running and some of their ideas and thoughts. I'm running for reelection, and the main reason I'm running for reelection is because we're right in the middle of a huge growth cycle, and it's been tremendous growth here in the Bismarck, Mandan, Burleigh, Morton area. We just, there's just no end to the housing development, business development, roads, streets. We're working on a new jail, as Mr. Saudi mentioned. I want to thank the voters for approving that half-cent sales tax. I don't know where we would be if we didn't have that in place because our jail is completely full, overcrowded. I'm here to, I guess I'm running out of time, I will get into it in more detail at later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, and Dakota Media Access for this opportunity to prevent, present my views. I chose to run for the Burleigh County Commission for three simple reasons. Burleigh County is poised for growth right now. We are on the edge of the buck, and they're going to come this way one way or the other. So we might as well accept it and let these people come in. I want to push an initiative to make Burleigh County a destination for families and businesses all in the same time. We need to make sure we maintain the quality of life that we have and safety for all citizens. Number two, I want to improve the relationship with the city of Bismarck. I want to work with city and county departments on projects to help orderly growth, whether it's roads, whether it's the new exit east of Bismarck, which I know there's a lot of talk of that coming to fruition, but I think that project needs to be pushed forward. And lastly, I want to be a voice for all the people in Burleigh County. I want to listen to all their concerns, and I want to give them the government that they deserve.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Thank you, and I too will thank the League of Women Voters, Bismarck Tribune, and Dakota Media Access for holding this forum. It's one of those things that we need within our community to enlighten our community as to who we are and where this community is going. I'm running for the position as all, everyone at this table is. Burleigh County is growing, and the county is growing rapidly, much more rapidly than the city. We need a vision, we need some things to put on paper so we know where to move to. I have the experience from the Water Board, from FEMA, from business agriculture, but most of all, I want to make Burleigh County the premier spot in North Dakota for family and friends to enjoy all of our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we're missing one candidate for tonight's, tonight's forum, and it's Jim Paluso who did let us know that he wouldn't be able to be here tonight. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the questions developed by the League of Women Voters, our audience here tonight, and our viewers at home. For our audience here to submit a question, please use the index cards provided on your chairs. Viewers at home, again, you can submit questions by calling in 355-1312, tonight only, October 2nd. Candidates have not been given advanced copies of these questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer the question that I give them. I will be rotating the questions so that you will all be on the spot for the first time at least once, so I'll make sure that, I try to be fair on that. Please comply with our time restriction so we can get to as many questions as possible. We might be rotating some of the questions so that we don't have the same, the same question to all five of you when it is your turn and you have a question. If your question is something as simple as what he said, or she said, you can also go say, "But I'd like to address a previous question," I came up with something new. You're definitely allowed to use your time the way you wish, okay? So we'll try and get to as many questions as we can, and hopefully we'll get a variety of answers. So let's begin. We'll start with you, Mr. Saudi. Is the county managing requests for industrial parks or new construction in an adequate way? Why or why not?
The management, I think, belies within the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I know that the county has recently developed their own planning and zoning department where before it was cooperative with the city. There's a lot of growth, and you specifically said industrial or commercial?
That is the question. Is the county managing requests for industrial parks or new construction in an adequate way? Why or why not?
You know, honestly, I have no idea what they're doing with it. I'm not involved in that, and no one has addressed that to me specifically.
Yet, yes.
Yes, no one has addressed it yet.
I understand, okay. Thank you. Mr. Baird.
I would say from my perspective that whether or not the county is adequately addressing applications that are submitted to them is really something that, other than Mr. Shonert who is on the board right now, I don't know that we can really address. At least I can't. I concur with Brad on that, I just, Mr. Saudi, excuse me. I, I think that the issue really becomes one of, what is the plan for the county? We're going to need industrial areas. We have some to the east of us, some to the area of the National Guard Center. We have a lawsuit that I've been made aware of going on right now about an industrial area out east of town along the interstate that has been approved, and the persons alongside of it have brought suit as a result of that. That's the conflict that's there, but I believe that that plan for where are we going is something that is lacking, and I think we need some development of that master plan to say where are we going to address those types of applications.
Thank you. Mr. Shonert, is the county managing requests for industrial parks or new construction in an adequate way?
I wouldn't say we're at the adequate point yet, but we're making strides to get there. We have started our own planning and zoning commission. We used to depend on the city to help us out with that, and the reason we did that was just for this reason, to provide more industrial and commercial areas outside of the city limits. When you ask if it's doing in the proper way, I believe we are because we are trying to guide it towards our major arteries such as I-94, Highway 10, 1804, Highway 83. These types of businesses and industries need to be where there's good access for transportation. Also, we have two major railroads, one going east-west, one going north and south to Wilton. That's where this industrial type thing needs to go. As far as residential, that has been an ongoing thing, and we're working with that.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman.
I would say with the county building department, planning department just getting started, we got to give them more time. We got to give Ray, Ray the Building Inspector, more time to get his department put together. However, one thing that I really want to do if elected to this commission is I want to take the comprehensive plan that is currently in front of the Burleigh County Commission and put it aside. We need to start with a brand-new plan. The plan that they're working off of right now is from the 1980s. It has been revised and changed over the years, but we really need to get a brand-new plan in order to move forward. We need to work with developers and find areas of land where they are okay putting with the developers and the neighboring residents where they're okay putting industrial parks. Every commercial realtor I talk to says we are short industrial land, and with the oil coming this way, they're going to want those places set aside, ready so they can get started, so there's not a building permit holdup.
Thank you. And there's a new question now? You may address the last one if you'd like, but I'm going to be rotating, so we all have a new question, and he doesn't get hit with the new ones each time. So just to let you know, this is the new question for you. Should counties continue to provide tax breaks for economic development in our current economic boom?
It's a very good question, and I believe the answer would be yes. Sitting back and analyzing the current budget for Burleigh County and what's going on in Burleigh County, and many people may not be aware of this, but because of tax breaks, because of other incentives, out in the area of McKinsey, there is a large Menards factory being built today. I'm not certain of the open date, I would anticipate it to be probably another year away, nine months to a year, but I would be inclined to continue working with developers to give them enough incentive to come here and come with their entire families. One thing we have to offer in this community is we are family-oriented, and I would like to see that remain.
Thank you. Same question goes to you. Should counties continue to provide tax breaks for economic development in our current economic boom?
I would say they'd need to be very cautious about doing so, and I'm not totally, my mic is on.
Thank you.
I think that the commission would have to be very cautious. I mean, if the law's on the books, you have to use it, but I am not totally sold on doing those for the sad fact that when you reduce the taxable pool, then it means that the rest of us are paying for those services that are being provided to them, and I, the exemptions to taxes do not sit well with me. The more people we have paying the taxes, the smaller that we have to pay. Our share gets reduced. And those jobs will come, and those people will come, and they will build homes, or they will move into apartments that do become taxable properties, but I think the business climate does not warrant the exceptions that are currently being promoted.
Thank you. Mr. Baird, should counties continue to provide tax breaks for economic development in our current economic boom?
I think the answer is yes. I say that with a little hesitancy because I don't know that in a blanket sense you can say yes. I don't think also that we live on an island in Burleigh County when it comes to the current economic times. No matter what we do here, we are still competing with Fargo, we are competing with Grand Forks, we're competing with Minot, we're competing with the western part of the state. The economy goes to where the incentives are. The economy goes, builds, and grows those communities based on what that community is willing to give to them. They're going to come here, but they're going to come here and ask for tax incentives. They're going to ask for those breaks from us, whether it's a five-year or longer tax incentive, tax break for them. I think that it is a long-range goal to get the economic engine continuing to be fired up and our community continuing to grow, so yes, I am in favor of them.
Thank you. And Mr. Shonert?
I also agree that you have to be somewhat careful with it. We used to allow a tax incentive on new home construction, and that has been done away with over the years. But when you talk about industries such as, and I believe it's called Midwest Industries that, that Menards thing is out here by McKinsey, we did allow them somewhat of a break, and I favor it when it brings in non-competing businesses such as, they're going to make blocks here that they sell at, Menards Landscaping Blocks, they're going to make steel siding, that type of thing, so it's a non-competing type. I also agree you got to be careful doing it because every time you allow that, you're raising the taxes on the rest of us. One thing a lot of people don't understand is, within the city of Bismarck, the real estate taxes, there's about 40% of the property that's not taxed. That includes all the government buildings, the churches, the schools, hospitals, that type of thing, and that puts a bigger burden on the rest of us for taxation.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question, which you led into, Mr. Shonert. How do tax breaks provided by counties for building of new homes impact the development of a metropolitan area? Do you also support tax breaks for renovation or improvement of existing homes?
I would say I support it if we are looking at older homes where it just costs way too much money to renovate. You have way too many older buildings in downtown Bismarck where it just costs so much money to renovate them. Now, I live out in the county and I just finished my basement. Would I ask for a tax incentive to finish my basement? Absolutely not, because I feel that is my responsibility as a homeowner. So for building new homes, I don't support a incentive for that because in the development I live in, I know there's probably 20 houses right now that they just dug the foundations for. Obviously, we don't need incentive to keep our, our housing market going. But for the older homes where you might have to do more work just to get some venting in, absolutely, then I think we should really look at an incentive program for them.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
I would agree that there isn't a need currently on new development. Some of the older facilities, homes particularly within the Bismarck-Burleigh County are in need of repair. When you start adding up costs of repair, oftentimes you're looking at $150 to $175 a square foot to repair that home, or where you can replace that home for approximately the same amount. I think it's one of those things that a group of professionals needs to look seriously at and come back to the commission with some good ideas. I can't say yes to one and say no to the other. To me, that's being a little prejudiced, prejudicial, excuse me. So I'm, I think this question is one I'd like to just kind of put on hold for the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Saudi, how do tax breaks provided by counties for buildings of new, building of new homes impact the development of a metropolitan area? And do you also support tax breaks for renovation or improvement of existing homes?
When the county did offer the incentive to reduce taxes on new construction, the cities did squawk about it, and, but, and I guess 10 years ago, we probably enjoyed that first $75,000 of exemption for the first two years that we moved into our home. It was, it was a gift, but it didn't stop us from building our home. I mean, we had plans to do that, and I think that those tax dollars need to stay directed to the entities that are levying them because that was in the budget, and when you remove those, again, as I said earlier, it shifts the burden back onto the other properties, and so I don't see that it's necessary.
Thank you. No, question is for you, the last question, the last time you'll hear this one. How do tax breaks provided by counties for building of new homes impact the development of a metropolitan area? And do you support tax breaks for renovations as well?
I don't support tax breaks for renovations. When I think of it especially from a county perspective, we don't have the downtown areas in the population of the county in general. We may generally, we may definitely have those if we look at Monocan, if we look at McKinsey, or if we look at some of these cities. I don't know that we do. But for new construction and whatnot, I feel the same as what I felt for industrial and commercial, and that is, I don't see any reason not to. I do also remember when the county and the city were doing the tax incentives on the first $75,000, and I thought it was a little disingenuous of the city when theirs stopped and the county's continued for the next year or two, the county board took some criticism from the city board, "You shouldn't continue doing that." Well, I, I think that all taxing entities have the ability to look at developing their area, and I think it was a good program for the county, and I would support it again.
Thank you. Mr. Shonert, you get a new question. This one is from our audience. With the opening of the combined law enforcement, how will you handle personnel, personnel policy and procedure? Do you see any other combined services with Morton County? So it's kind of a dual question, you can address one or both. I'll say it again. With the opening of the combined law enforcement, how will you handle personnel, policy, and procedure? And do you see any other combined services with Morton County?
I think it's been agreed in our agreement with Morton County that the detention center is going to be run by Burleigh County, by our sheriff, and we kind of decided right from the get-go that that's what needed to be done because you can't have two commissions running some facilities of that size, there's too many different ideas. So he will be in charge of the hiring and firing of the personnel and, and making the policies with our blessing, so it'll be up to the sheriff pretty much to handle it.
Thank you. Do you see any other combined services with Morton County?
Other combined services, other than the detention center?
Yeah, other than what we have, yes, or what we're getting.
Yeah, we have, I'm going to stop.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, okay. And you get it. With the opening of the combined law enforcement, how will you handle personnel, policy, and procedure, and do you think there'll be any more combined efforts with Morton County?
Policy and procedure for the detention center needs to be set by the sheriffs. They're the ones that are experts in the law enforcement field, let's let them handle it. If they have a question, they can come to the county commission, and we can develop a plan with them. I don't think it's the county commission's responsibility to tell them how to do their job. So I like the idea of let the sheriffs make the decision, and then if there's an issue, we can handle it after, after that. As far as more, more combined services, I do think there's already talk of a dispatch, combining dispatch services. I think that is a great idea, simply because I've talked, I've talked to numerous people who, when they're down at the river, they call 911 if there's an emergency, they can get the Morton County Dispatch Center. So then it takes time to transfer that call over to Burleigh County, and in an emergency, seconds are everything. So I think you can combine all that, plus it can help the police officers if they're on one side of the bridge, maybe an officer on the other side can help.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I'm in total agreement with what Mr. Feldner has said regarding the sheriffs manning the joint center, but there are several areas. There's 911 that could be combined very easily. There's social services that could be combined very easily. Morton County Parks, they have a phenomenal park department. Burleigh County at this time does not have that. So I think here again, this is one of these issues that one by one, I see it happening. I don't see it happening overnight, and I also see Burleigh County working closer with the city of Bismarck, the city of, of Wing, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. And you get the question again, Mr. Saudi. With the opening of the combined law enforcement, how would you handle personnel and policy and procedure, and do you see any other combined services?
Thank you. The Burleigh County Commission would, has some oversight with the sheriff, but the responsibility, as everyone I think agrees, is with the sheriffs in handling that, the personnel. They've come to an agreement on how it's going to be staffed and who's going to transfer over, and with new hires, they'll have to cross that bridge when they come to it. As for cooperation, I think there's always time for cooperation. I don't want to see redundancy in services between it. We've got three wonderful bridges crossing the Missouri River, and I think we need to use them in Morton County for more than car traffic. We need to start cooperating. I believe that the Bismarck Parks and Recreation Department's new budget is nearly as large as the entire Burleigh County budget, and maybe Burleigh County's parks could be managed through the city of Bismarck.
Thank you. Okay. New question. Mr. Baird, this again is one from our audience. The county was strong in social media, website, and press updates. How will you continue to be transparent with the public?
Learn how to use social media, Facebook. Luckily, my campaign manager, who is my daughter, is very adept at that, so thank you. I, I think that that's a good question because the question is one of transparency, and I think it is a good question because that, I think, is what has been lacking. I think watching the county commission struggle through these recent meetings on the budget is a good showing of that because, as the one person that was at the podium said, "I don't mind paying taxes. I feel that it's a blessing to be able to pay taxes, but if there is a problem, I want to be part of the solution, but I don't know what the problem is." I got a letter in the mail that said, "Your taxes are going up 11 or 20 percent, I can't sort it out." How is that? Why is that? Why didn't anybody contact me? I think there needs to be, and Facebook and social media is great for that, and I think that transparency is something that needs to be expanded.
Thank you. Mr. Shonert, the county was strong in social media, website, and press updates. How will you continue to be transparent with the public?
I also struggle with social media. At my age, I have a hard time keeping up with it, but I'm all in favor of it. I think it's a great thing. These young people, they, they know how to handle it. Being transparent is a big thing. As government entity, you want to be as transparent as you can on all fronts because the people need to know what's going on, they need to know what's happening with their taxes, they need to understand. Our last budget hearing, we had this room packed full, and I think there was a lot of, and that's where social media can kind of backfire sometimes. I think there was a lot of social media going out there with misinformation, and these people came, and like she said, they were kind of upset, but after they found out what it was all about, it kind of leveled things off. But social media is good. We need to promote it, we need to be as transparent as we can in every, every possible way.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman.
Social media is a great access point to get your message out to as many people as possible because those people can share it. possible because those people can share it. One thing I like to see on the city of Bismarck's Facebook page is when they have a criminal and they have a surveillance camera shot of them, I share every single one of those just for the reason that if I can get it to one person and they share it, it just keeps spiraling downhill until maybe it helps the police department out. As far as future transparency, this afternoon, I went and found my property on the county website. I can get all this information. And when I was watching the county budget meeting, I thought about this. I can get updates sent to my texts, sent to my phone, or email from my favorite football teams or websites. I would love to have a link on there where somebody can register their address. If for any reason their address is in a proposed special assessment district or any project where they might get affected, send that out to them prior to the final budget hearing so they can actually see what is happening, so they can come take care of it up front instead of on the back end.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said. I'd like to take it one step further, though. We've talked about social media, and it is a wonderful tool. But looking at the populace of our county, we need to be more transparent in those forms in which people are accustomed to. The radio, the TV, the newspaper. Something I have found since I've been on, just on the Burley County Water Board, is you send out information hoping and praying that everybody will see it on your website or see it on your Facebook page. And you know it's the one guy sitting next to you that didn't get it. So, I'd like to see social media expanded for the county, but I wanted to go further than the commission. I wanted to go to all the various departments of the county so that you have a way of finding out just exactly the information you need.
Thank you. And a new question. Mr. Saudi. What are your thoughts on developing a strategic plan in managing growth within county government, especially in the areas of increasing employees, building, and the space needs? Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, no, that's fine. Thank you. I know, as you look through the county budget, you see a number of places where the county, different agencies are paying rent. And I don't know if that's a money game, shuffling it from the county commission to a department who is funded by mill levies. So, I mean, there's some issues there. If we're putting county employees out into rented property, is there county property that could be better utilized toward that? I know that the new county shop has moved, and some of that old county shop is going to be utilized for other county employees. The second part of the question?
Growth within the county government, especially in the areas of increasing employees, building, and other space needs.
Yes. There may be growth in county government for employees, but only if the people need it and are willing to pay for it. That's what we need to ask them as these departments grow.
Thank you. Mr. Baird.
Have you read the question again?
Mm-hmm. What are your thoughts on developing a strategic plan in managing growth within county government, especially in the areas of increasing employees, building, and other space needs?
Well, I think the county, if I may, has been active when they acquired the old Providence Life Building across the street. I think that was an excellent buy by the county, and it was an excellent planning for the future of the needs for employees. And I think that we need to do that on an ongoing basis. I mean, I don't think that we can say today, "We are going to have 100 new employees by the year 2030 or 2040." We don't know what the true impact is going to be from western North Dakota. We don't know what the needs are for employees. We had the question earlier about sharing with Morton County or with the city. I think as that grows, and I think that's an area where we need to grow and expand, maybe the need for new employees is going to diminish to a certain degree. So, it's a little difficult question to answer. You need to plan. You need to think about it. There is strategic planning that goes on. I think that strategic planning and communication and cooperation with the other entities will help answer those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Shonert. What are your thoughts on developing a strategic plan in managing growth within the county government?
Well, I've worked on many strategic plans in the past, and it seems like you plan ahead five years, 10 years, or whatever. And a year later, you have to start all over because, especially in the last few years, our growth has just been tremendous. And trying to keep up with it is a real task. One of the things that we're doing, we're building this new county shop. And the reason we're building the new county shop is because of the growth. We outgrew the new county shop, which is, the new one's going to be out northeast of Bismarck. The old county shop, we're going to retain, and that'll be used to house part of the sheriff's department, probably emergency management, probably the weed board, probably the water board, that type of thing. Just because we have so much growth, we don't know where to put these people anymore. The growth is in our employees. We have 80% of our budget is salaries, and that's growth in government. So, getting a strategic plan is not easy. You have to start over every year almost.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman. What are your thoughts on developing a strategic plan in managing growth within county government?
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Shonert on this. I honestly think at the rate that we are growing right now, to actually put together a five, 10, 15-year plan, I don't know how you can even do that. There's just too much growth coming in at such a rapid rate that as soon as you think that you have one area taken care of, five more fires pop up. That's just the way it is nowadays. So, I think we need to go talk to our Williams County, McKenzie County, Stark County, city of Dickinson, all those people out there, see what kind of lessons that they learned from their mistakes. And maybe we can start incorporating some of those and come up with a better plan to move forward five, 10 years down the road. I think that's the only way we can actually get a handle on the issues that we're having.
Thank you. Question from our audience. Would marijuana decriminalization for adults help our prison overcrowding problem?
Interesting question. I really have no idea. Marijuana has been legalized in a number of states. It certainly hasn't helped in Montana. I really don't know about Colorado. In California, it has helped. I would assume it would help, but assuming usually gets one in trouble. So, I'm just going to say, I honestly don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Saudi. Would marijuana decriminalization for adults help our prison overcrowding problem?
We hear that sentencing rules that have been mandated by the state are adding to this population for their called minor crimes. My personal perception is that the abuse of legal drugs and illegal drugs and alcohol are a big scourge on our community, within our families, and our neighbors. And I think we have to be tough on this. We need to be tough on our drug and alcohol at all levels. And if it means jail time, then so be it. But along with jail time, we need to provide rehabilitation, chances for rehabilitation, and chances for treatment for those that really want to do it. People that refuse to take treatment or to take it seriously are always going to be outside the law.
Thank you. Mr. Baird.
I think that Ms. Jones is right. I mean, this is a very tough question because who knows the reaction of legalizing a product that's illegal now? I don't know that we could say. I would suggest that marijuana itself has been decriminalized over the last, count the years, whatever it would be. And I don't think that that has shown any type of downturn in our prison population. And I think part of that reason is marijuana became such a recreational drug that it almost, you know, "I don't do that anymore. Now, I do meth." So, now what do we have going in the prison? We have people that are using and abusing meth. There are people that are using and abusing heroin. I happened to be a drug chemist for the state crime lab back in the '70s, where I did forensic analysis of drugs for four years. We didn't see meth like they have today. We were seeing joints of marijuana. We were seeing lids of marijuana. Society changes, and society's going to dictate that. I agree with the rehabilitation part. That will help our population.
Thank you. Mr. Shonert. Do you believe marijuana decriminalization for adults would help our prison overcrowding problem?
I do have some mixed feelings about that, but I do have a problem. I believe that marijuana usage leads to stronger drugs and causes major problems in the long run. Just to relieve some of the pressure off of our detention center and penitentiaries, I don't know as we need to legalize it. I think we need to leave that up to the legislature, the judges, the prosecutors. They make that decision. As a county commission, our role in that is to provide the housing. And whether we like it or not, we have no say over who goes in there. We only can provide the housing for the people that are sentenced or are being put in the jails overnight or whatever. But we have no role in the say of it. It's up to the judges, the prosecutors, and so forth.
Thank you. Onto our eighth question. Mr. Feldman. How should Burley County manage current and future flood issues?
After the event of 2011, we should have very good data based on what level the river rises, what's going to be affected. What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see every group, entity, get together that was affected by that and had a part in fighting that flood, get together, and let's put together a plan. It may already be in place, but let's get together a plan. Sandbake Central, where's that going to be located? So, if the water starts rising, we don't have to race to get things organized. Let's just get the plan in place so if the water gets up high enough, then we can kick our plan into gear and fight the river back. Another thing I'd like to see happen is maybe some permanent flood protection. Let's start working with the Army Corps of Engineers. Where can we put some permanent flood protection? And then on the backside of that, I know Fargo does this, they can do parks. You can have parks on the backside of that. Fargo's got the nice dike on the east end of town. That's their sledding hill in the winter. Let's put together a park plan like that.
Thank you. Ms. Jones. How should Burley County manage current and future flood issues?
Well, since the flood of 2011, we do have a plan. And there is some permanent flood protection still being worked on. Being on the water board, down south, we have what we call the MRCC, the Missouri River Correctional Area. That entails quite a bit. Those folks will be voting on it. This is a subject matter that, yes, there were a lot of emotions. The county commission, in my opinion, waited the right amount of time to let the emotion go out so that we could use logic in planning. The county commission has come up with a wonderful plan. What we need to do in the future and before the next flood is go out and talk to the constituents and make certain that they understand that, okay, it cost you $40,000 to clean up. If we put a dike in here through the special assessments, even with cost sharing, it's probably still going to cost you $15,000.
Thank you. And the question goes to you. How should Burley County manage current and future flood issues?
The 2011 flood was, I think, a 500-year event. I mean, those are really hard to plan for. And what Mother Nature can throw at us, we can't always plan for. During that time, I looked at the water commissions or the federal maps, and our house sits 248 feet above the water. I can have empathy for the people that lost personal possessions and their homes in the water, but I don't want to pay for that privilege that they, the choice they made to live in a flood plain. And if they need to work on that, they certainly can band together and do that. But I don't know that it's fair, and I think it would be up to the entire county to vote on that issue. And I, as a commissioner, I would want to know what the other 85,000 people think.
Thank you. Mr. Baird, you're the last one with this question. How should Burley County manage current and future flood issues?
Part of the reason that I'm running for the Burley County Commission is because I did endure the 2011 flood. And I saw a county that was dealt a new hand that it had never had before. And I saw this county commission rise to the occasion. I've never seen a community that was so energetic as when that flood started. I never have seen before or since pickups hauling oversized trailers behind them, way overweighted, driving 50 miles an hour through the city. And I've never seen the county commissioners react the way they did, and they protected us. I didn't have the advantage of being as far out of the flood as Mr. Saudi. I was two feet out of the flood. And we watched every day. We emptied our house, all furniture, in case the worst thing happened. I don't like the thought of not developing a comprehensive plan and drawing on the experiences of 2011 and dividing the constituents and saying, "We shouldn't all have to pay for that. This is a county. It's not a separate area of town that is or is not affected."
Thank you. And the new question goes to you, Mr. Shonert. Should the state take over county social services? Is it an unfunded mandate?
The last part I'll answer first. Basically, we considered an unfunded mandate because they tell us, "This is what you will provide," and we have to do that. Should the state take over social services? Yes. We are lobbying the state right now, the legislatures, to do just such a thing. If they would take over social services, it would really help us to reduce our real estate taxes. The reason I think they should is because being in the area we are, we draw a lot of people from surrounding areas to Bismarck and Burley County, and it puts an extreme burden on our taxpayers. It should be spread across the state. Some of these counties are getting rid of the social service recipients, and they are coming to Bismarck and Burley County and falling on us.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman. Should the state take over county social services? And do you believe it's an unfunded mandate?
I would say, yes, it is an unfunded mandate if the state is not pitching in and helping with the cost of it. Now, on one aspect, yes, we have a lot of people coming in, and they do go to social services right away to get help, get their feet on the ground, and get started. Now, I think on top of that, we need to have a program in place where we can get them into jobs. You know, we have job service, yes, but maybe we need to have someone else that can meet them at the social services office and get them in touch with employers. I know the employer I have, you walk in the door, "We're going to interview you," probably within a day or two. We need help, you know? So, the other thing is, for those people that are taking advantage of social services, that's a problem. But social services also serve some of the most vulnerable in this community, and we cannot turn a blind eye to them. They need that department in their county so they can go down to their county office and get the help that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Jones. Should the state take over the county social services?
Yes, because it is mandated by state law. And quite frankly, if it were, currently, out of the 26 or 27 mills of property tax that goes to the county, I believe between 15 and 16 mills go to social services, about $8 million, $9 million. I agree with Brad that, yes, we do need those services available. It's just, it's such a burden on the taxpayer right now.
Thank you. Mr. Saudi.
Same question.
Same question. Should the state take over county social services?
I think along with the mandates, the state does provide considerable funding to those programs. I think part of the problem is the federal government's hand, along with the funds that they provide, there come strings attached. And I think that we've lost local control of running those programs. And now you have people that can shop from state to state because they know the federal rules that tie the state and the county. And so, I think there needs to be a real assessment as to how these programs are run and where this money is going.
Thank you. And onto our 10th question tonight. Mr. Baird. Counties play an important role in helping to provide mental and behavioral health services. Over the summer, a report was released that details opportunities for improvement in the mental and behavioral health system in our state. What are your thoughts for helping to bring mental and behavioral health services to a level to meet our needs?
What a question. We could talk for a long time. The issue plays off to a large degree to the previous question. You know, we have degree to the previous question. You know, we have social services, and we have homeless. Social services can't necessarily reach out and help the homeless. They can. They don't have, they have the ability. I represented in the past and continue to this day, representing a nonprofit in town that can, to a degree, reach out and help those people. And to a degree, they were helped by social services in the years gone by, and social services said, hey, you take these cases for us, because we can't, we don't have the manpower and can't do it. Social services cut off the funding, says, we can't afford to give you any money anymore, but please still take care of the people that are mentally infirm, the people that are left on the street. We need more of that. We need the services to take care of those people. We don't need homeless people. We don't need people that are having mental problems and going untreated. It's a huge issue.
Thank you. Mr. Shonert, your opinion? A report released that details opportunities for improvement in the mental and behavioral health system in our state, what are your thoughts for helping to bring mental and behavioral health services to a level that meets our needs?
Well, I think our county would be open to any types of programs that we could cooperate with, and I think we would have to cooperate with on a state or federal level, because I don't see where the county could take over such a program. But there is a need for that. As it's stated, there's a huge need for that type of thing. And I believe our federal and state governments have fell short on providing them services in the past. And to push it down to the local levels, I don't think that's quite a fair way to do it. I think that we would cooperate if there was some way of providing programs funded, or partially funded by the state and partially by the counties, cities.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman?
I think it has to be a joint effort between the state and the local governments, because we do have a large homeless population in Bismarck and Burley County. We also have people that just need the help, you know. Maybe they just fell in hard times, whatever, but they need the help. If it means getting the Department of Human Services involved with the local social services offices, then so be it. Let's create a program. Legislature starts up in January. Let's go lobby. Let's get, let's get a program put together. Let's get a plan put together statewide. It's not just a one-county issue. It is an entire state issue. Let's get the legislature involved, and let's get a program started.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Same question.
Same question.
Okay. There is a need for the service. There's no doubt. And Burley County, with the growth of 3% to 5% annually, we are picking up more homeless, more people who have mental challenges. I agree that it could be a state and a county and a city joint effort, but we're forgetting about the federal government. And the federal government needs to get as involved at the state and local level as the other entities there.
Thank you. Well, thank you for being here tonight. It is our last question and your closing, closing statement. We're wrapping up together. We'd like you to all give one minute of whatever you think we did not address tonight and something you'd like to say. So, please, what do you see as another area that needs addressing in Burley County, and how would you address it? So, that's your final, final question for this evening. Mr. Saudi, you'll begin, and we'll go all the way through.
The, another area that we need to address, I think, is the education of the public on everything that goes on. The, last week, there was a large contingency that came to the preliminary budget hearing, and they were there partly because of what they heard on social media, partly in what the letters that they received. And so, there's an education process that we need to do and to handle in the county. People need to be more engaged. They need to be voters. They need to be informed voters. And that's, it's not the county commission's main goal. The powers of the county commission form of government are limited by the North Dakota Century Code. And I think sometimes we have too many people that come and expect the government to take care of their need and their problem and their squabble. And I, as a county commissioner, I would be working toward allowing these people to work on their own and not try to be there to solve every problem that they have.
Thank you. Mr. Baird?
Thank you. I think that, again, one of the shortcomings that I have seen and would like to work to rectify is the coordinating and the communication between the various governmental entities. And when I look at the county budget and I look at the needs that this county has, and I look at a lot of those needs being caused by the impact of western North Dakota on our county, I think that the coordination and communication is really lacking between us and the state. I mean, I look at, we talked about the state mandates when it comes to social services. We looked at the part of our budget that's committed to social services, and we have a state government sitting on, I don't know, $8 billion, you picked the number. I was disappointed to see that the city decided not to have a governmental affairs officer to do lobbying. I think that both of us should get together and get a lobbyist and go to the legislature, because I think that's where the help is.
Thank you.
Would you repeat the question?
Yes, Mr. Shonert. What do you see as another area that needs addressing in Burley County, and how would you address it? This is for your final statements.
Okay. I think, what I think needs to be addressed is, as he alluded to, we are a fringe area, and we really need to work with the legislature to try to get more funding for our needs. I'm a big promoter of public safety, and that includes the sheriff, the detention center, the attorneys, the prosecutors. We need to protect our people, and that, we run short there all the time. That's been a big thing because of the growth from the oil impact, and we need help there. I would say that was probably the biggest thing we need to focus on, other than overall growth. It's just been a huge problem.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman?
As part of my job, I travel out west weekly. I'm in Watford City, Beulah, Hayes, and Killdeer, Williston, Alexander, all of it. I see what's going on out there. I see the amount of roadwork that's being done. And some of it, maybe it's the state's fault for funding, maybe it's the local government's fault for funding. But what I think this county needs to address right now is our infrastructure needs as we continue to grow. Do we need to expand our road network? We need, we obviously need a new comprehensive plan, so we can start planning where we're going to be putting, where certain things can go. The road network's big. Maybe we need more traffic lights. We need to start doing those studies now, so we don't get to a point where it's too late, kind of like I see out west all the time. Some of the projects they're doing there, they should have been done years ago, because the traffic is just getting too congested.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Well, I would agree that we need to communicate better. We, as a county, we, as a community, we need to put our best foot forward, whether it's social media, the newspaper, little letters out to the taxpayers, something that the county started here maybe six months ago through their planning and zoning. I get a planning and zoning newsletter about every two months, and I just love it, and I share it with everybody I know. Infrastructure is a concern. There has been a lot of planning going on. We are taking it maybe in baby steps, maybe a little slow, but we need to maintain the roads and the bridges we have. We need to, as Brad alluded to, we need to plan for major arteries, which I believe 57th Street will become at some point. There's so many things we need, but we have to prioritize those. And I would, as a county commissioner, be the first one to jump at the priority list.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you guys all for coming tonight. Thank you very much. I also wish to thank the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Thank you to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and their issues, and our issues. The program will replace several times on Government Access Cable Channel 2, and will be available for online viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading up to the Burley County Commission election. Before we close this candidate forum, I want to remind you that voting in North Dakota is very simple, and you can find voter information at your county auditor's office and from the office of the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you for coming. Thank you for listening, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.[1762.13][1762.13][music]